I hereby declare this meeting of the Contra Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Borough Council held an executive session prior to the regular scheduled work session on personnel and legal matters. The first item on the agenda is land use, public hearings and ordinances. The first is a waiver of land development application for 227 Washington Street with Morgan Properties Acquisition Company LLC as the applicant. Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt McHugh on behalf of the applicant here. This is a waiver of land development for 227 Washington Street that are known as the Millennium III Building.
Correct.
Or the former Marisource Bergen Building. The applicant is Morgan Properties. For those of you that aren't familiar with Morgan, they are a national owner, operator, developer of residential real estate throughout the country. They are in the process of moving their headquarters from King of Prussia to the Millennium II and Millennium III Buildings. They've been going through, they now pretty much all of the Millennium condominium complex and have been doing the internal renovations for their headquarters. This relates to the external site work, which is pretty minor in the overall scope of the project but requires your approval. So just to quickly overview it, they are proposing, this is the Millennium III building, they are proposing square off the ends of the building towards the river. They're also proposing a camping area over the interior parking lot. There's some exterior connections, some stormwater management facilities that are being added in that area. This here gives you an idea, on the left is the existing condition of the building and here is what they're proposing. So I think it's a nice improvement, it would be a nice part of the red carpet there at, you know, Brandon Morgan Properties for the community's sake. So we have review letters from your professional staff, there's a handful of comments in them, already submitted revised plans.
That was my question.
The ones that are, that were issued, we worked through with Mike and Stephanie and Karen and Allison, and I think we addressed all of the issues that were in keeping with those letters. Happy to go through many of them that we may have comments or questions on, but I think it's a pretty short report. Project here, I think we addressed the comments from the professional staff and we're just asking that you act favorably on our waiver of land development application.
My question was going to be if all of the changes were made, that needed to be made from Gilmore Associates and the county and the engineer, all that's been done and submitted?
Yes, we've revised and submitted them. And then once there were any revisions, we worked with the staff and I think we addressed their satisfaction.
Okay, that was my only question?
President Leonard, that's right.
Thank you. Anyone else have any concerns, questions?
What is the timeline for a project like this?
Hopefully as soon as possible.
If it's approved?
We're hoping for the end of January, beginning of February to be complete with the M3 project.
Okay.
I mean, we've already done all of the interiors, so the only piece now is the exterior, which we're all kind of waiting and chomping at the bit to get going on.
Okay.
And when will it be occupied?
It'll be partially occupied depending on when we get the CO, but the interiors may be October, November, and that will just be a small piece of the team to kind of try out the building systems and make sure everything works. The full company-wide move would be in January or February when the building's complete.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you for coming in this evening. Thank you for sending all the plans ahead of time. It was lovely to read the 150 pages of them, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
I will turn that over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. We have several items within your Vehicles and Traffic section of your ordinance for amendment. We have circulated a draft amendment of some of those. There's still a little bit of work to be done, but it would include adding a permanent stop sign, and most of these you'll recognize because you had temporaries in place. A permanent stop sign on Hollowell at 12th in both directions. A stop sign on West First Avenue at Forest in both directions. We're also adding the ability of the fire marshal to enforce fire lane parking restrictions, which is not in your current ordinance but serves an obvious benefit to the borough. The ordinance would make permanent the 15-minute to-go parking on West Fourth at Fayette Street. And we're also working through your commercial vehicle parking regulations with respect to the parking of commercial vehicles in the borough. That still needs to be vetted by staff a little bit more, but we have some ideas on how to make that section both more user-friendly and more beneficial to the residential individuals in the borough. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll have more for you soon.
I do have a question. So the idea of the fire marshal enforcing, do we include alleys in the parking ordinance where we have some areas about fire and?
So the alleys would have to be marked with a fire lane. So chances are, no.
Okay.
They would not. So the fire marshal's ability to issue parking tickets or to enforce the provisions is limited to those areas that are actual true fire lanes. Yeah. We can look at the alley issue a little bit more, but the problem obviously is that they're private, so that creates an issue for us.
Regarding the commercial vehicles in the street?
I'm sorry, forgot to turn my stuff. I forgot to turn on. Regarding the commercial vehicles within the streets, would that include someone with a trailer on the back?
That's one of the specific things we're looking at is even if you have a normal truck but you have attached to it a 14-foot trailer, that's an issue in the borough. So right now, the way your regulations work are they're all based on weight.
Right.
And that doesn't really capture that situation. So one of the things we're looking at is in addition to a weight restriction, a size restriction too, which for you guys really is one of the, is the big issue. You already have a limitation that where the spots are marked, the vehicle has to be within the marking, which works some places but not everywhere in the borough, obviously. So if we do a length restriction and we make sure that it's properly put out to the residents and the commercial folks working in the borough, I think that could help a lot.
Including the weight limitation?
In addition to the weight limit. Yep. So you have a weight limit, a length limit, and probably a width limit is what we'll end up with, but we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Mike, since you've just obviously started looking at that, how long has it been since we've looked at that ordinance?
About 10 years.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's one, that's one section where there's like an exception. It's actually longer than that for most of it, so it's been a long time.
That's what I assumed.
Yeah.
It's kind of like the garages. Everything's bigger.
Yeah. It's been, looking at that has been a long time coming.
Okay.
So I'm glad we're doing it.
Do trailers include all trailers, like boat or?
So the sample regulations, because we obviously can always look around and see what other folks are doing, most of them do because all we're, all you're focused on is size. Now, if it turns out that that's something that you don't want to regulate, we can always pull that out, but the concept right now would probably include those, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And obviously, you know, if you're lucky enough to park your boat off the street, that's okay. It's just taking up on-street parking that we need for residents and cars.
Anyone else have any questions for Mike?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. The next item on the agenda is under presentations. Mr. Nader, I believe, is here, is going to do a presentation on Refresh a Can.
Okay. You're good to just stand up here and just press?
Yeah. You good? Yep. Thanks for having us.
Good afternoon. My name's Tom Nader. I want to talk about the service that we've been providing for the borough for the past three months. With me is Brandon Bailey. He's our operations manager. If you live in the borough, you may have seen him driving the truck around. And this is Dylan Kramer. He is a Percinus junior who we're fortunate to have as an intern for us, because I couldn't do this. So having previously spent half my career in the solid waste business, I was down in Florida, I saw one of these trash bin cleaning trucks, and I instantly knew this is a service that's well-needed in the Northeast. We got an operation about a year ago, and they're far and few between, but this is actually a technology that has been around in Europe for about 30 years, surprisingly enough. If you get your trash picked up, you usually have a monthly, quarterly trash cleaning service. So next lineup, just for those who haven't seen our truck.
Don't you hate cleaning your garbage cans? It's dirty, time-consuming, and makes a huge mess. At Refresh a Can, we love cleaning cans, and we're great at it. Refresh a Can is a convenient curbside garbage bin cleaning service servicing a variety of industries. Your trash bin cleaning service starts with us with a scheduled pickup time and location. Our trucks wash your bins on the spot, so our customers don't have to wait for a return Our 360-degree cleaning heads remove dirt and debris from every nook and cranny of your trash bin. Blasting water at over 200 degrees while pairing it with a disinfectant kills all festering bacteria promoting true cleanliness. After your trash bin is sanitized and disinfected, you deodorize each container by hand with a scent of your choice. And after we're done, we place your trash bins in your desired location, guaranteeing that it's clean, disinfected, and deodorized. It's as easy as disinfect, deodorize, and done. Schedule today for a low monthly cost and never touch a garbage bin again.
That obviously wasn't Hector Street. Just to reiterate, our truck carries 600 gallons of water, 300 gallons of, for the gray water after the cleaning. 3,000 PSI in those heads, 200-degree heat, totally deodorizes the container. We use eco-friendly spray after we clean your containers. I don't know if anyone in this room has had their containers cleaned by us, but hopefully you can vouch for the, yeah.
Smelled great, looked great.
Yeah. And then once we're done, we bring it back to the curbside. Just some facts everyone knows, just, you know, the health risks associated with dirty trash cans, bugs, maggots. We use 100% environmentally-friendly product to clean your containers, and once the container's cleaned, we dispose of the water, wastewater properly, which is classified as gray water. Why not do it yourself? A lot of people will do it themselves. Put a hose in it, scrub it, dump it down, go in the stormwater system, and enter in other, you know, systems. Use bleach, dump it on the grass, hose and broom, you know, cold water, it just doesn't do an effective job. More about germs, there's just a nice before-and-after shot of, it's not a county can, it's a, you know, local contractors, it's, just gives you an example of what it looks like before and after. So we met back in March. I was able to, we were able to meet with Ray, Executive Director of Operations, Francis Perry, Shawna, and of course Stephanie, to discuss a project that we would roll out for this summer and was provided a not-to-exceed budget, and that was sort of what went out from Shawna's office on your, I guess, your borough website. We also do the same thing. I don't think as many people follow our social media as follows boroughs, but we do post weekly on where we're going to be, what days. To your right, there's a picture of Brandon cleaning the borough cans, and then on the left is a, I don't know why we threw that in there, because it's a local restaurant that a lot of the restaurants in Contra Hocken, their cans are on the curb, and, you know, sometimes I don't really want to eat there after walking by the trash can before I'm going to have my seafood. So how are we doing? You know, thanks for the great cooperation with everybody involved. We have, you know, we're in lock sync with Frank and the sanitation crew. We know what street, he knows what streets we're going to be on, I know what streets he's going to be on. If we're running behind, he's running behind. We, you know, I feel it's been running very efficiently. So we've cleaned to date 2,159 bins, that's of last week. Participation rate's 78%. A lot of times, you know, if the container's out there, if we do Hector Street and they just pull it in, we'll take it out and we'll put it back, but if they pull it behind their house or on their side, we won't go in someone's property. But I think 78%, it's a pretty good participation rate. We're probably down to the bottom of that map, which is about 10% of the trash bins remaining. We have about 50% of the budget left, and we have enough to go and do a second round and take care of all the recycling bins. We'll read these, but, you know, just some reviews that we have. You go on our website, we have five-star Google reviews. Some of them are from the township, just talks about the cleanliness, professionalism, et cetera, which is very important to us in trying to grow our business. So in closing, I just, you know, I hope that to date, the borough feels that this has been as much of a success as I feel it is. I believe the community has been very happy with our service, and I would hope that like in future years that this could be part of, you know, a once-a-year, twice-a-year program with Contra Hocken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're having Tom and his team present this evening because we are gearing up for budget season, and so this is a service that's going to be in discussion, just like Tom said, continuing the relationship to be able to provide the service to the community.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I think it's a great service. I'm very happy with it. I think most of the residents are very happy with it.
I think I remember cleaning your street.
I was very excited. I was very happy.
I wanted to say thank you and give a little perspective that when we transitioned to once-a-week trash pickup, one of the concerns was everything you mentioned here. And now, having this service really kind of allays those fears but definitely like reduces those concerns. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for, you know, for allowing us to try to prove, you know, to prove ourselves and hopefully you'll see more of us.
Thank you. I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was at a restaurant and got unsolicited feedback just a couple weeks ago that it's an amazing service, and they were so excited that they could have that in the borough. So thank you.
Great. So hopefully we could finish up the, you know, the balance and then have us back when you need us.
Just a question for Brandon.
Sure.
Well, first, a thank you.
Of course.
Because we were up front, and I had to scramble to pull trash cans that I had already taken back for my yard and two other neighbors, so thank you for that. And then, is there anything that you experienced, like just being there in the streets, that we should know about, that people, obviously there's some that's missing it at that time? But is there anything that you found that we should?
Well, like Tom said, it's been very well-received, so that's been great. But what I have found is that some of the residents say that they had no idea that we were out. So I guess that might be a little bit of a hiccup in the communication lines, but, you know, once that's cleared up, you know, I don't think there would be any issues. That's really the biggest thing I think I've noticed.
Well, that's helpful.
Yeah. And, you know, we do have our, we post it weekly. Facebook, if our Facebook was just shared with your residents on your Facebook, it probably would be.
I see it on there. I think the problem comes in with the people who aren't on social media.
Right.
That's who we have to get to, which hopefully through our newsletter now, they will get that news, so. At least, maybe they'll read that. That would be helpful, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing such a great job.
Thanks.
So if our emergency management personnel can come forward.
If everybody doesn't know who's sitting up front, Megan Klosterman, one of our firefighters, the battalion chief, Steve Young, and Chief Lennon. So this presentation was supposed to, we want to do this every six months, just to give a basic evaluation of how emergency management is happening in a borough, Contra Hocken. As you all know, we have some new things that will be happening in the borough. Things are constantly changing, and they're not getting, we're not having smaller events. We're having bigger events that are going to require more attention from the people that are seated here. So from my perspective, I'm moving on to a different portion of emergency management and trying to have some more community outreach with how emergency management is done. These are the boots-on-the-ground people who evaluate everything every day and talk about changes that we need to have. So I'll just go over some of the things that I want to brief, I want to talk about as far as what we've had happen in the last eight months or so. So the Chief Lennon will be talking about things like our dispatch center. Now, we're going through the same thing as everybody else with the problems with trying to get equipment, and the dispatch center has been delayed because of that. He'll go into it, but that will be put into operations as soon as it comes in. We have all the personnel lined up in order to make that work, but that hasn't happened yet. Steve Young will talk about the flood gauge and some other things involved around that. The other thing that I want to talk to about, from the community perspective, is I think we have, on the emergency management part, we were going more on the boots, boots-on-the-ground, trying to establish this emergency operations center and getting our, getting attention into these major events, but we are lacking in some of the outreach, especially when, one of the things I've noticed is some of the elderly people in the community, there's some victimization of elderly people that you see. A lot of it has to do with computers and things like that. So for our 2024 budget, we're going to incorporate purchasing some computers that we can bring into the EOC and have some community outreach where we're going to invite some of the elderly community into the EOC, show them what that's all about. And with the help of the chief and the detectives, who are very familiar with crimes that involve computers, we're going to provide an education, all the way down from how to use your cellphone to get onto Park Mobile, all the way up to should you open this email or not open this email? This isn't an idea that I came up with. I happen to have been watching something that was going on in Philadelphia on the news, and a very, very articulate person who was in the IT field, who had retired, is providing that service for the city of Philadelphia. And it was amazing how many people he had come out for it and how many people volunteered to teach it. It is a big deal, obviously, in Philadelphia, but it's a big deal here. And the other thing I think, and the chief can attest to this, is people who are victims of this tend not to want to talk about it. They don't want to go out to the police. They take the hit for two, three, four, five, $10,000 and walk away. Don't even, don't even call the police. And then, you know, you'll find out that there's 10 victims in your community that these people hit you for. So that's one of the things we're going to, that I'm going to concentrate on at the beginning of the year. You'll see some of that reflected in the capital budget to try to get that done. We're going to work with the community center, have those people that are using the community center. We'll have, we'll have some of our people go over there and talk to them and invite them to an event, whether it's at night or in the day. So if there's any questions, just go ahead.
I just want to say, be aware that the elderly are extremely stubborn when it comes to trying to explain fraud.
Finding?
Trying to explain fraud.
Yeah, well.
They think it's, they do.
We have some people that have experience with dealing with them.
Yeah, me too.
I personally, my previous occupation, have dealt with somebody in the borough of Contra Hocken who took a $25,000 hit on this. She couldn't afford $25,000, but she did. She was unfortunately the victim of somebody purchasing saddles in Canada for $12,000, but she didn't tell her son, she didn't tell, her son happened to be somebody that I had known, and he came and said, "Look, what can we do about this?" And West Contra Hocken, it happened too, it's a pretty prominent businessman over there where his mother was part of it. That went all the way to the point where the person traveled from Nigeria to West Contra Hocken, because at that point, we were about $15,000, $16,000, and he was looking to cash in on more. So again, we, you as members of the council, and, you know, you know who we're talking about, some of these people, they just don't want to talk about this. They could be, it could be very difficult to have these conversations, especially if they've already been a victim of it. But if we, I think we'll have something small.
Yeah.
Where they get some personal attention from the police, not just a speech, but they actually get shown how to use, how to use a computer. Not just, you know, go on the Internet and push a button, but a lot of things are coming in through emails, a lot of things are coming in through text messages, and just responding to them opens the door for a lot of other problems. So it was just something that hit when I saw it on, and I think that that's something that we could do in this community.
Yeah.
So as far as my port of that, I'm going to reach out, I'm going to do a little more of that. It's going to be, a lot of the things that I'll do are based around that for the first six months. We do have some events that are potentially going to come up. That is going to be something, that is going to be something that we will talk about. But the decision to have an emergency management department in the operations in this borough was probably one of the best decisions that you made, because now we have a group of people that are all on the same page, and it just takes one phone call and no explanation. This is what we have, we have going on, and everybody knows what their role is in that particular incident. On major events, we'll have four, five, and six meetings. incident. On major events, we'll have four, five, and six meetings. Overkill, absolutely overkill, but we don't want to get caught off guard. The one time we don't meet and talk about it is the time we'll have a problem. So we've turned from a municipality, which our biggest events were things like the soapbox derby and the fireworks, and really, I don't even think we had a call during the fireworks this year. And the soapbox derby went off without a hitch. Those are the minor events now. The things that we have are going to be involving five, 10, 15, 20,000 people. We have helicopters landing all over the place here. It's funny in one sense, but you know, we do have to address the fact that we have helicopters landing here. And they're landing next to a river. So there's two problems. There's a helicopter landing, and then there's a river. So the potential of one, an incident influencing both of those is, is out there. So Steve's had, we've had Boeing in, because of Steve, he was able to get Boeing in the helicopter division and have a training with them to talk about how to handle a situation like that. These are things that we wouldn't have even discussed in the past, but it was necessary. We didn't realize how necessary it was until we started running it. And obviously, this is the way it needs to go. It's just a more professional way to handle it. We can handle it not only as a group here, but we can also show a little more professional acumen, say, to places like Plymouth Township, White Marsh Township, and the county when we start sitting down with them and discussing these bigger events. Okay? Any questions on any of that? So again, the, the other thing we have, the police department talked, is going to, I'm sorry, the police chief will talk about how we are now moving into another category with dealing with another section of Montgomery County, and how we're going to be part of that team. Not only the county, we'll be part of their team. The drone program is a big part of that. There's more and more, there's more and more agencies that are requesting our help when it comes to drones. Dave can actually talk about some of the things that the drones have done, but they've been out to White Marsh Township, Springfield, different areas of the county. And we've also assisted the county in some activities. Megan just got her pilot's license for FAA. We have now seven or eight people with them. And it's a good group. It's a very dedicated group. So dedicated, a couple of them just got back from Miami on a two-day excursion to learn more about drones. You'll notice the one with the tan, that was one of, that was one of them.
In July, I mean, you know.
So I'll turn it over to Dave if you can, if you just want to talk.
Just so you know, Steve has a tan too, I see.
Steve was not.
Dave is in Miami.
Megan, remember the question.
So the first thing would be the Eastern Montgomery County Emergency Management Group. So this is a group that was, has been around for a number of years. It started in Cheltenham and Abington. They have full-time emergency management coordinators and staffs there. They expanded to municipalities that they regularly worked with. They all kind of shared some of the same problems and same issues. So they formed their own group. They saw the need to do that because of the same kind of lack of, lack of resources and effort from the county level. So they formed their own Eastern Montgomery County group. They've expanded that group. We have made contact with them. We are on the borders of the border and municipalities that are part of that group. So we are going to now meet with them and train with them. And again, just a valuable resource. They're not separate from the county. This is above and beyond what the county is doing. So one of their initiatives is to start a drone unit. The county has a drone unit now, but it's one person with one vehicle who is supposed to respond to all these incidents. We have asked the county to recognize our drone unit as an asset, just as they would list a K-9 or some, a narcotics officer to do that, but they have not, have not done that yet. So the Eastern Montgomery County group is going to form a list of people and assets that are available. So we are currently sharing those assets. I can tell you on the police side, we have gone to probably 10 mutual aid incidents in the last three to four months where we're, we're out looking for subjects, whether they be wanted subjects or missing persons. And we have put the word out to our surrounding municipalities that we are available and willing to come assist you. And we have also assisted the county because of this one person who's responding. So we have a working relationship with him, and if they call for mutual aid, we've told these municipalities to call us also, and we'll come and we'll help him. Because it's a collaborative effort. You can't just fly the drone by yourself. A lot of times, a lot of times it's at night. So we are, we're going to participate in this emergency management group, and we're, we're excited, I think, to do that. Like Ray said, we, Calvin Pearlman and I, the deputy chief, we, we attended a drone conference. It was in Miami in July. So it was, it was, it was, it was great. But the weather was great. But we did learn some valuable things. Just to keep it real brief, Florida is a blue-list state, so they have some restrictions about the type of equipment they can buy. The, the state of Florida has adopted a federal standard for the type of drones that they, they purchase. So we learned a lot about that. We learned some valuable lessons about search and rescue and how to use our drones, and some really creative ideas that their fire department is doing down there. They're attaching sensors to these drones, and they're flying them into these hazardous, hazardous response areas, and they're turning the camera around and looking at the sensor rather than sending people in there. So just, just, it was, it was well worth it. I know it sounds like Miami, and we're going to have a good time at the beach, but we, we did learn some things. We met some people from NASA that used drones to do drone inspections of Cape Canaveral. We went to some conferences where we learned about how we should be managing our, our drone program and what we can do to take it to the next level. And I could say that what we're doing now is, is really great, and we got some really great contacts to, to take us to the next level. So thank you for giving us that opportunity to, to go to Miami in July.
Thank you.
So talking about the flood and our flood problems that we have along the river, the amount of time, resources, and energy that the emergency management team has put together to make our floodplain as safe as possible and provide for the best use of that area for our residents. And that starts with mitigation. Working with our floodplain administrator and working with code enforcement, we're constantly down there working with the properties to make sure what is in place needs to be in place and is maintained and working order. We also work with them to maintain their properties to make sure that nothing's going to float away and cause problems downstream as we work through the problem. So it all starts with that code enforcement side. All right? Next would be our preparedness side. So we've spoken many, many times about the training that the fire department goes through. But the fire department can only react. And one of the biggest things that we were able to add to our list of resources is that flood gauge that we never had before. Having a local, quick, timely read of the, the river is invaluable, both for the warning for our residents to get vehicles out, to shelter in place, to evacuate. We are currently working with our emergency management team to bring out the USGS. They're going to survey our floodplain so that we can establish trigger points for, hey, move the cars out. Hey, shelter in place. There's water on Washington Street. And give us levels that we can work with the property owners down there each and every time to give them the best warning that we can possibly give. So as of right now, the gauge is in place. We have a height reading right now. Their goal is now to move forward within the next couple of weeks to move to flow, which we never had. And with that, we're going to have the survey take place. What we've seen since the gauge has gone online in comparisons to the Norristown gauge that we used, is our section of the river goes up much quicker than the gauge that we were previously using. So what we've seen in the month and a half of data that we've collected so far is that our gauge stays about a foot below Norristown. But during a rain event, our gauge goes up, is pretty much four to five feet above the data that we were collecting before.
Wow.
So in time, using the USGS, in time, using the observations from our first responders, we knew that we were all from using the gauge before. And now we're going to have a very clear picture with our new gauge here in town.
It's just one?
Just one. It's on the bridge coming into town from the West Conshohocken side. It's a little gray box. I think at some point, we're going to have a sign with a QR code people can scan, see what's going on. We can put on the website where to, to see what's going on and share that information.
It's attached to the bridge?
Yes. It's a, probably like a foot-by-foot gray box.
Okay. So to clarify, it's not like a visible gauge? It's just collects the data?
No, no, it's a mechanical scale. I think it's like a laser that, that reads the water that way.
It's the newest of the news. It uses radar and lasers.
So it went live about a month and a half ago, and so far, the data's telling us what we pretty much knew is we get a lot more water in this body of water than what's coming downstream between the other small streams coming in.
As long as they don't let the reservoir go.
So that's the one side of the preparedness. And in addition to that, the emergency management team is working with staff to constantly update the code red system. You know, we have a code red system. We can go borough-wide. We also work with the different leasing offices. As part of their lease, they all get an application, each and every resident coming in. We're constantly doing an open enrollment night where we advertise with the different management groups. And, you know, the more information we can put out in a timely manner, the better off we're all going to be. And we have a working relationship with all the property owners and management groups along the river, from businesses to the residential uses.
That's great.
And then following up with the response side, we have the fire department. We're starting to incorporate the police into that training to have a more all-hazard response. You may see the police driving a high-water vehicle. It could be public works. Again, the emergency management team is just that all hazards, bring everybody together. And we put the manpower or woman power wherever we need to do to get the job done and just work between the different services. So.
You just talk about the swift water rescue certification.
So currently, the, the fire department's always trying to improve its services and improve, you know, where we are with our standings, with our swift water training. The next step that, that we are currently in process of doing is becoming a type-one team with the state of Pennsylvania. It's a level of accreditation that takes into account our training, our equipment. And with that comes oversight from the state that we welcome and, you know, is peer-recognized, that the state will come in and assess our capabilities. The state wants to see training records. It's not just a fire department with a boat, and we go out. It's to a higher standard. And we are applying as a type-one team, which is 14 technicians, two chiefs, and it would be one of five in the state of Pennsylvania.
That's great.
So that's our goal that we're hoping to accomplish by the end of the month. Any questions regarding the flood plan?
Any other questions?
Go ahead. Thank you.
So that's the update for emergency management for now. One thing, if, and I, I've seen, people have sent me things on social media about the river, the riverfront, the amount of building that's going on there. They put out pictures about the terrible things that can happen. This, I can confidently say that this municipality is well-aware of what potentially can happen, and is probably structured the best to handle it of any municipality along the riverfront. So there shouldn't be any fears from any of the council people. Something like that were to happen, you have a good group of people that are dedicated and know what they're doing. They're just not going to be there. They're also going to know what they're doing. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I'm having a September quarterly meeting?
I'm sorry?
Emergency management, September quarterly meeting?
Uh.
It's June 1st, so I'm, just because I'm on that, that's all.
Shauna is not here, so I don't know what the schedule is. When Shauna's not around, I don't even know what my schedule is. But she will definitely get it out there, and we will have, besides that meeting, there will be plenty others because we do have some active things that are going on that, you know, need to be addressed.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to conduct an interview for the zoning, zoning here in board alternate position. Mr. Brea, if you could come up. Good evening, David.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for being interested in the position. Happy to have you here. Anyone have a question for David?
Yeah. Why do you want to do this?
Just a quick question. Does this need to be?
Yes, green.
Green.
Green, yes.
All right, now that everyone can hear me. Thank you for having me here tonight. Okay, quickly to that question, why I want to participate. You could probably see from the application that I submitted that I do have some experience in local government. Prior to moving to Conshohocken about a year ago, I lived in Yardley in Bucks County, where I served five years on the borough council there. So I became intimately familiar with all the ins and outs of what needs to happen in municipal government, and some of the not-so-fun things as well. We just heard about floodplain and, and emergency management. Yardley Borough was a floodplain community as well. So all of those preparations, all those considerations from emergency management to zoning, I learned them in and out. In terms of why I want to serve, that experience, the five years in, in Yardley, really taught me that communities are only as good as the people that are helping to run them. And the way that we can participate, it can be big, as you all have here, a seat on council. It could be little things, right? I know that there's Christmas events that go on and, and just other ways that people can participate. I feel that I developed what is somewhat of a technical skill and understanding, you know, in this case, some zoning regulations. That's what I have to contribute, and I believe we all have a duty to contribute. So when I saw the vacancy, I thought it might be a good fit.
Anyone else have a question?
Did you have any experience with zoning issues in Yardley?
Plenty. We had a pretty dated zoning ordinance, top to bottom. It was written in the early 80s and hadn't been touched much since. So we were trying to modernize. The town was growing. It had a reputation for many years of being, you know, all accountants and real estate offices. And we had a real growth period where there were lots of restaurants, there were breweries, there were people coming into town in a way that there hadn't been really at any time prior. So we ran into all of the typical issues, right? Parking. All of a sudden, developers want to put in high-density housing projects that, you know, we maybe didn't quite have the infrastructure to support. So we had to navigate all of those things, look at the zoning ordinances to say, okay, what's dated, what needs to change, maybe what new provisions do we need to introduce to make sure that this growth is going to work? And then, of course, floodplain management is sort of its, its own animal. We experienced 300-year floods in a 10-year time span. As a result of that, there was sort of a reactionary floodplain ordinance that was put in place. It was very strict. Provisions were well-intentioned, but didn't always make sense. And we went through a probably two-year process, working closely with representatives from FEMA and PIMA to make changes to that ordinance, to really get it right. And in the process, we also qualified the borough as a Class 8 community in the community rating system, which earned folks a 10% discount on their insurance premiums. So it's a long-winded way of, of saying, yes, I've worked with them. You know, that was sort of on the, on the creation side, which is going to be different from the, the, you know, interpretation, whether or not relief is valid. But yes, experience around zoning matters.
Long-winded answers are good because then we don't have to think up new questions.
I would fill up the time here, right?
Right.
What brought you to Conshie?
My partner and I were ready to move in together. He was in Philly, I was in Yardley. We were looking for somewhere centrally located, so we looked in a couple of different areas. Conshie was on the list. And after we saw a couple of different houses here, had the opportunity to walk around, see what's going on, we thought this is a great fit. There's stuff to do here. There's stuff to do here. It's an interesting town. We like the vibe. It seems like, I don't want to say up and coming because you have too much going on to be up and coming, but it's still going in the right direction. So it was an active choice to be here.
Well, thank you for choosing Conchi.
Anyone else have any questions for David?
So David, you've been here for a little over a year, I believe you said.
Yeah, yeah. We closed mid-August last year, so just coming up on a year.
So within that year, do you, or have you thought about any particular issues that you are passionate about, that you'd like to dig into and be part of solutioning?
Broadly speaking, or pertaining...
Just broadly?
Not specifically. You know, I think the first couple of months were sort of, we had a lot of boxes to unpack and, you know, trying to just, just figure out, you know, what is this new place we're calling home. But, you know, I certainly, as I, as I said in my introduction, am looking for those, for those ways. So this opportunity presented itself, right? And I thought, okay, this is something I know how to do. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how many other applicants are, but my experience was that people aren't banging at your door to serve on, on all these committees. You know, so it's not necessarily that I, I looked and said, hey, I really want to be on zoning hearing board. It, it was just what was here, and I, I feel that need to contribute in whatever way I can.
Thank you.
Have you attended any of the Conshohocken zoning hearing board meetings?
I have not.
Would you, do you feel comfortable about the time commitment that it might take if you were to be on the zoning hearing board?
Sure. I know it's involved, you know, so certainly we'll make the time commitment as, as it's required.
Well, thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for your interest. The next item on the agenda is under manager matters. The first item is consider approving a block party request for the 200 block of East Eighth Avenue. I'm going to say, the motion is to approve a block party request for 200 block of East Eighth Avenue contingent upon the final administration review and approval.
I have a question about this. Can I ask a question?
We can do that.
Okay. I think this is for the borough manager. I think now, or this is an event that's gone on for several years, correct? And what, did they have it last year?
They did, yes.
Okay. Because I just know that, I think on that block, Yoga Home is now there. I just want to make sure that it wouldn't impede, like, on their business.
It's between Howell and Wells.
Okay, cool. Yeah, that was the only question I had, to make sure that people who want to go to their business could still have access to it.
Okay. All right. So the motion is to approve a block party request for the 200 block of East Eighth Avenue contingent upon final administrative review and approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is consider approving Resolution 2023-17, designating a Section 504 officer. So the motion this evening is to approve Resolution 2023-17, designating Christine Stettler as the borough's Section 504 officer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The last item is consider approving a tuition reimbursement for Officer Smith for the 2023 fall semester. So if council is so inclined, this evening, the motion is to approve tuition reimbursement request for Officer Smith for the 2023 fall semester in the amount of $3,761.89.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone for public comment this evening? Okay. Stacy, do you have any comments?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. I believe there is another concert here on Wood Park on Thursday. So if anyone is interested in going, the attendance has been great, the music has been great. I don't say, meeting and movie night in the park, is it at Aubrey Collins on, I don't know.
That's towards the end of the month, isn't it?
27th?
26th, 27th. Okay.
It's on our webpage. 25th. Okay. All right. With that, I will say, being adjourned. Thank you.